Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Carrie, who can take your walk?
Bob Palmer.
I'm here.
Patty Bass.
Here.
Shelley Kidd.
Here.
Jim Christopher.
Here.
Gina Musarelli.
Here.
Okay, so everybody received today's agenda. The only modification we want to make to it is that under new business, Patty wants to make a couple of announcements. Only get to that. So, other than that, are there any changes or corrections? Pretty much a one item deal.
No.
Okay. If not, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda submitted with the announcements to be added.
Our motion to approve the agenda, announcements to be added.
Okay, second?
Our support.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, we don't have any over yet, but this is kind of a one-issue deal where we want to get to the final review of the fire department study that we've been doing for about, on and off, for about two years, but mostly the last year. There's nothing under public hearings, under presentations. We'll do it under the new business. There's nothing under unfinished business, but on new business, Patty, you wanted to make a couple of announcements before we got started.
Alright. So, I did some looking into the board packets of surrounding neighbors and all. There are a few that don't give them out, and there are several that do in several different ways. So, I'm going to suggest, I don't know if we need to do this as a board approval, but I suggest we put them on the website, and then if anybody wants to print them, they're there to be printed.
We did that with today's stuff, was that right?
Yes, it was on there. So, going forward, they will be posted on the website.
You just need to be cautious. Sometimes the agendas get things added right at the very end, or corrections get made, and so we have to add those separate like we did today, but we'll post them going forward.
And I also want to say that we would have, we would also not be able to post anything like confidentiality stuff, like between legal and employees, lawyers, so on and so forth.
Pending real estate deals.
Pending real estate deals, that type of thing. Kevin?
The point to make is that you can't post the meeting minutes until it's approved at the next meeting. So, it'll be a month's delay to get another one.
Yeah, for the meeting minutes, yes. But, I'm talking about the board.
But, I'm assuming you're going to post those, the minutes?
Well, yeah. They always are posted.
They have to wait until they're finalized at the next meeting.
Right. So, you might get the draft minutes in that packet, because the draft minutes come in the packet, so. But, that's your mark, draft minutes. The next thing is, Carrie, our secretary here.
Planning and business manager.
Sadly, planning, zoning, building is leaving us. January 14th will be her last day, so I hope to have an add-in over this weekend to look for someone to fill her position, and then we'll talk amongst ourselves and what we want to do and see who can apply.
You might get a call for a special meeting, because we need to do it kind of quick. She's going to leave a big while when she leaves, so.
There's a lot of work ahead of us, so I don't want to put anybody off, though. We'll make it really easy for you.
It has been fantastic.
You want the job.
And we wish her well.
We do. She's done a really good job. We are going to miss her terribly. She knows a lot of stuff, so.
It's a technical phrase, right?
We'll be speed dialing her. I'm sure she'll be like, "Stop!" But, thank you, Carrie. We wish you well.
Thank you.
For instance, we don't, but we do wish you well.
Okay. That gets to the item under new business, which is the discussed final review of the fire department. So, Teresa, you're going to kind of put the slides up and then talk through them. And a lot of this is recap, so you understand that it's for the benefit of the board. Everybody needs to know that what I'm going to do is go through kind of a synopsis of everything that's happened on the last two years, the original study and the subsequent one that we did. And then, I'm going to, at the end of that, I'm going to have Chief Mason do a presentation on his proposed solution. And then, when that's all finished, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions or comments, so we can go through that first. And then, after we're all done, I'll open it up if the audience wants to have any questions or comments going forward. So, the first one's just to say that we're going to go over this review. And, as you can see, the original purpose of the study was to take a look at the fire department operation as a standalone fire department. If you go back, Groveland Fire used to do just Groveland Fire. Then, we spent, I think it was maybe about altogether 12 years or so, where we tried a number of different things in the fire department to see if we could bring extra dollars into the fire department for the purpose of putting those extra dollars in the fire department and being able to build it up better, if you will. And, the long and the short of it is, that's what we were trying to do, get more money into it. But, we wanted to look at the long and short-term needs for the fire department and evaluate the financial sustainability after we got rid of the Village of Holly. The original study that we did, we had all kinds of runs that, if you don't remember, that we did for Genesee County for a long time. We got CAS certified. We staffed up some extra people. We were running a lot of runs, but not one of those programs ever was sustainable. They all went belly up and in without making any money. The last thing we tried to do was when the Village of Holly asked us to take over their management and their EMS runs, because they did not provide advanced life support. And, we did that for about nine years, I think it was. And, together, those two contracts made some money, but when Chief McGee retired, he wanted to go be the chief over in the village, and we wish him well, and he's doing that now. And, when that happened, we said we're not going to do just the runs, because, again, we just weren't making any money on any of this stuff. What you're going to find out as we go through this, it should become kind of apparent, really, is when a community decides to do EMS medical runs, it costs money to do those. There is no way that a small community like ours can do that and somehow say it's actually cost-effective and making extra money come in to the township. It all gets used up in the extra staffing and the costs associated with the medical runs. It might be different if you were in a bigger community, where they typically run eight to 15 runs a day, I don't know. But, you cannot do it in a small community and actually make money. So, the decision, and that's the one we made years ago, when we decided to do the EMS service, was because the ambulance company that was in the area at that time used to respond in about 30 or 40 minutes, I think. And so, basically, if it was serious, you weren't going to get anybody out here in a short order of time. We did that because we felt there was a need to provide something that frankly, the outside businesses wouldn't provide the way we needed it. And if you think about it, that's the exact same thing that happens when you read about the stuff. I think the citizens done some stories on what's happened in Atlas, where they wanted medical runs, but basically, they're just unwilling to pay for them, and they don't have enough to justify it. In the case of Groveland Township, we said, "We think that's a critical service we need to provide," so we started providing medical runs. But, it does not make money. And what we're really realizing is, the incremental cost, when you do a certain number of runs to go to the next staffing level for that, is also impossible to actually have enough runs coming in that makes it work. I mean, we tried it one, I don't know how many we were doing when we were dealing with Genesee County, but there was a bunch of them, and it never worked, because they weren't sustainable. Even now, when we do runs outside of our township, there's not enough money that comes in from those to pay the incremental cost of providing the service for those extra runs. So, this next slide was just the old one, the original one that shows you, over that about 13, 14-year period, some monies, some years we had some surplus money, some years we didn't. When you averaged it all out, I think it came out to a little over $26,000 a year. We knew, the board, the previous board before this, knew for a long time that when we were trying all these different runs, none of them were generating enough money. In fact, before we ever did them, and we ran just Groveland Township, we used to put together, when I started here, between on the low side, 50, 60 grand, and I think about 110 grand on a really good year, in surplus funds that were used for buying equipment and facility, stuff that we needed. When we started doing all those other runs, we realized fairly quick that all the stories about how much money we were going to make just never happened. And what happened is, in that 14-year period, the average was only about $26,000. That is not enough money to be able to buy $125,000 ambulances, or two or $300,000 fire engines. You simply cannot do it with that. The next chart was the one that really put pressure on us, kind of. If you look at that, and that's the amount of reserves that were in the fire department by year. You might look at that and say, "Well, it looks like there's a lot of money there." But, if you notice, on the last year in '17, this last couple of years, it's going down. And that's what really prompted us to frankly, no longer just wonder what we're going to do, but take a critical look. When you look at that money that's in the fire department, the auditor's report is always done on August, or excuse me, March 31st, because that's the end of our fiscal year. Between December and March is when the county collects all of the property taxes for the winter bill. That winter bill, in our township, we don't do what some people do. We hold it both for the township's part of the tax collection and the fire department's part of the collection until April 1st. So, in that number that you see there, that last one's about 1.1 billion, you say, "Well, it still looks like a lot of money," even though it's dropping quite a bit every year. It's not, because about 850,000 of that's the revenue that's coming in that we're holding until the fiscal year starts on April 1st. It's collected kind of between December, when we all pay our taxes, and maybe as late as February, but we hold that. If you take it out, you see there's about 300 grand left in there. And where we're dropping, about 100 grand a year. So, we were at the point where we said, "Not only are we not putting money away for the equipment, but at the current rate of demise, we're going to end up having about two or three years, and we will not have the money to make payroll." So, this is what prompted the original study for looking at alternatives. So, when we did it, we did a couple of things. We were looking at projected year-end revenues, and when Chief Mason took over, I gave him a huge objective to take care of, and he did it in sterling manner. I said, "We're running out of money. If we don't figure out a way to fix it, we're not going to be able to make payroll in a couple of years." Chief Mason took it to heart, and he went through every line item in the fire budget, and he peeled out anything he could on some of them. I think he cut the communications bill about in half. He made some changes to the fuel service arrangements we had for gas, to save some money there, and a number of other items that I can't remember off the top of my head. But, he combed every bill item we had, peeled everything out we could. He put off buying some equipment and stuff, because he could see we just didn't have the money setting up for it, and we weren't going to. He kept on going that way. So, he deserves kudos for tackling a huge problem when we first gave it to him and making it turn around. We think, at the end of this year, we're going to have at least $650,000 in cash reserves, instead of that 300 you saw on the old chart. It might be more, and I can't give you the exact number, because the auditor does our fiscal audit, and we get the results usually August or September. It may well be better than that. But, the important thing is, he took the problem that was going down, turned it around, that's like turning the Queen Mary, and got it going in the other direction. So, we thought, at the end of this, things are looking pretty good now. I think we're getting our reserves up. Another couple of years, I think we'll have it. We like to hold roughly the one-years tax receipts that are on that March 31st auditor's report as a reserve, because we don't return it, and we want enough above that to be able to take care of some stuff. And, we're getting there very quickly now. So, we thought we had it all fixed, and that's when we had the first review and said, "Okay, we think we have the problem solved now. We're going." But, we don't, and this might be hard for folks to understand, but we do not control the work of Groveland Township, okay? And, there are forces at work that affect us that we don't have control. And I'm quoting the phrase I think you used, Chief Mason, NACFA. Kind of put all the chips in on this one. In the last two years, they significantly bumped up the volunteer pay for firefighters. And actually, I have to commend them for it. I think what we found out is, the volunteer pay for firefighters is grossly inadequate and has not kept pace. What NACFA did is become the best in the area for paying volunteer pay. They raised four or five dollars an hour in a two-year period. We have become the worst in the area for volunteer pay. And, the others are all kind of somewhere in between. I think it varies from fire department to fire department. But, we said, "Look, we can't operate our fire department and have volunteer firefighters working next door to another fire department that's in the same kind of demographics we are and pay that much less. Even if they're willing to do it, it's not a sustainable plan for the long haul. You just can't do that, and it's not fair to the people." So, we went back to the drawing boards and said, "We have to take a look at everything." And that is the next slide, which was, "Let's take a look at these pay issues for the volunteers." Another issue that, and at this time, so it wasn't just me looking at it, I asked trustee Jim Christopher, "Why don't you come in and sit with me in all these meetings? Feel free to ask any questions you want. Check anything you think needs to be looked at, so we have two pairs of eyes looking at it." And so, for about a year, we looked at what are the pay issues, and one of the things we realized is, we've asked a lot of Chief McGee, or excuse me, Chief, sorry, Freudian slip, Chief Mason, to work shift times while he's also doing the management stuff. And, we felt that one of the things that has to happen is, some of that time has to be freed up for management functions. The other things are, as we said before, we still had to deal with the cash reserves, make sure they were going in the right direction. We think some additional training is probably important. And then, we decided to do something that, to my knowledge, Chief, I don't know, to my knowledge, we've never done a real in-depth analysis of the runs that we do in a given year, not to the extent we have here. And so, we thought, "Let's kind of slice and dice and segment those runs and understand exactly what it is that we're doing and where the issues might be." Well, we took a look at the existing operation exactly the way it is today, and said, "Well, when the grant is gone, if we don't change anything at all, we're going to have to raise the fire mileage to somewhere between 4.9 and 5.5." We realized it was probably about 5.2 mils. The problem with that is, there is not another fire department in the entire state of Michigan that has a fire mileage that high. Groveland Township, if we do that, will become the most expensive operating fire department for the whole state of Michigan. There's about 214 fire departments in the state of Michigan. Nobody is that high. We're currently, because we lowered the mileage this year to about 3.8, like we said we would do, and when we originally raised it temporarily, we're about 11th, I think, right now. We're second highest in all of Oakland County, but raising it to that would make it the highest. I think that begs the question, you got to take a look if you're doing your job, is there something we can do different? And so, that's what we started doing. One of the things we thought about was, I know, I went with, I think I went with you, Matt and Kevin, to, was it North Village you went to, or North?
Lion Township, I'm sorry.
And we talked to the fire chief there when we were getting ready to do our fire training center, to see what they were doing. And it was an interesting conversation with the chief there. He said, "You know, they're adding so many new buildings and businesses out here and new subdivisions. They have a lot of money that comes in new every year, so it kind of helps run things for us." Well, we looked at ours, because some people had said, "Oh, we're growing and expanding. Why don't we just add more stations and more people?" But, that's not what's happening. I'm sure it's a little hard to read, but it's the same one that was used before. Before the year 2008, we averaged about 32 homes a year, and I used to print that every year when we do end-of-year stuff in the citizen paper. That's what we were doing, about 32 homes a year. In the last 10 years, our average new builds today is 5.3 homes a year. There's two or three years in there where we had none. There's a couple where we had three or four or five. The average over the 10 years is 5.3 homes versus the 32 homes we were doing. So, that is an 83.5% reduction in new housing builds. And, there has not been one single subdivision or site condo. For those who don't know, site condos are really just another way of building a subdivision and titling it different. They look the same. So, we haven't had any of those in 10 years. And, I'll get you that there, okay? So, we looked at it and said, "Well, there's absolutely no chance in us being able to outgrow this problem. We're not going to get enough growth and expansion to be able to do it." So, then we started segmenting the runs that we do. And that's where we found out that Groveland does about 21% of their runs. These are slides from the previous one, just recapping here. 21% of our runs are roughly one out of five are not even in Groveland Township today. There's still not. And for those of you who don't know, what we did was, we had Teresa do a sterling job of taking Chief Mason's monthly reports for runs and stick pinning every run that we do and color coding it to the type of run it is. There were, in the first 12 months after we stopped doing the Village of Holly, 879 runs, I believe, was the total. They're all represented here. So, when I say the 20% that's outside of Groveland Township, this line right here is our township. For those that don't know, most of the townships are six miles wide and six miles deep. So, all these runs out of here and down here and over here, and there's some up here, I think, added up to about one out of five runs that are not in Groveland Township. And, there's kind of an anomalous arrangement here between us and the North Oakland Fire Authority. And I have to say, while we went through this, the chief weapons in the North Oakland Fire Authority has been absolutely first-class to deal with it, and I think, Jim, you would echo that.
Absolutely.
He's been 100% professional, very positive, not negative about anybody. He is right on top of his numbers and very accurate, and our auditor confirmed that before we ever, before I even talked to him the first time. But, in Groveland Township, we by agreement handled this section over here, but all of this over here, that's Holly Township. Just so you know, everybody in here is paying taxes to the North Oakland Fire Authority, and Groveland Township is doing all of those runs. By the same old agreement that's been in place years before I was here, this corner down here of Groveland Township, which I think is, I think it was about 50 or 60 homes down there, 80, 80 homes down there, these runs, they're paying Groveland Township fire taxes, but their runs are coming from NACFA, North Oakland Fire Authority. There's somewhere around 55 or 60 runs that we did up here, and there were 13 down here that they did for us. And I have to say, an interesting side note is, in the 24 years that I've been township supervisor, I have never had a complaint down here from anybody on the service they get from North Oakland Fire Authority. And they've been doing it that whole time, paying our taxes, which have been higher for the last 10 years, but getting their service out of NACFA. And all of these people are paying NACFA's taxes, but getting their service out of our fire department. This starts to beg some questions to be answered, I guess. So, what we did next was, get the next one there. Chief Mason came and pulled all the runs, all the way back to 1998. And if you look at it, here's the history kind of in Groveland Township, and it stands out here a little bit. In 1998, '99, 2000, the calls we were doing were just Groveland Township calls, okay? I think we may have done some that were at other places that we did early on, because they weren't running medicals at all, but that's basically what we were running. Our peak census number for our population was the year 2000. At that time, we had about 6,250 people, give or take a couple. You can see that into year 2001, we dedicated Station 2, the one down here at Grange Hall and Jocelyn. And, it wasn't put in because we needed a second station to handle the traffic or anything. The purpose for Station 2 was simply to be able to attack the ISO number, so that we could drive everybody's homeowner's insurance, or almost everybody's homeowner insurance rates down. The ISO Insurance Services Organization is the group that looks at communities, does an independent evaluation, used to be every seven years, I think it's every four now, isn't it?
Four to five.
Four to five years. And, they have a matrix that they go through, and it changes from sampling to sampling, you know, as they modify their rules. But, they determine whether or not you are capable of providing good fire protection service. And frankly, for the most part, they don't care about your ambulance service. Their concern is, "How well can you preserve the properties that they insure to minimize their exposure?" And that's what drives down an ISO rating. And, we were the first in the area to really tackle that, and we got an ISO 4, which was an exceptionally good number. But, as things go on, people all learn how the rules work and get some idea of what needs to be done, and subsequently get better. And so, when they reevaluated everybody in the state in 2018, we had all of our ratings here get better. NACFA was a 5 when we were a 4, although I'll be honest, I don't know if there's any difference in the premiums, because every single number doesn't seem to have a direct correlation to the discount you get. But, we were one better than the NACFA on the first one. On the next go-around, which was in the August of 2018, we got to a 3. That is an extremely good number. But, NACFA for Rosenholly and Springfield also got 3s. And, the real reason all of us got better numbers, I think, Brandon, is that a 4 now, aren't they? Chief?
I think it's a 4.
I think it's a 4. And the reason they're all better is because of the Mutelay Box Alarm System. What that does is, when somebody calls 911 and says, "I got a fire. I need somebody out here," they have a predetermined list that they go through for every community that says, "Oh, if you get a structured fire in Groveland, you're going to call Brandon, you're going to call NACFA, you're going to call Springfield, you're going to call Independence." And that's why, when you see an actual house fire now, you commonly see four, five, six fire departments showing up, because the 911 dispatch center automatically calls all of them to make sure they can try and suppress the fire and save the property. So, now with the new ratings, one of the things we did when we first went through this, if you go back to 10 years, when we were trying to get our ISO down, we told our residents then, because our mileage had historically been 3.5 mils for as long as I can remember, we said, "Look, the economic downturn in 2008 hit the property taxes to about a 43% drop in two years. That impacts the fire department greatly. With that much revenue gone, we can't run it the way it is. So, we're telling you, we want to raise within that Headley agreement to 3.94." And it was designed to basically put about 60 or 70 grand back into the property tax revenues that had been lost by the second year of a precipitous drop in taxes. And when we did that 10 years ago, we said, "But, we'll make this commitment to you. We think this is the right thing to do, because we have a very good ISO when we got to 4." And it's a question of this, "Do you want to spend the money in the fire department for a low ISO, or do you want to give the money to the insurance company corporate headquarters in New Jersey? Because, one way or the other, you're going to pay it." And everybody, I had one person that didn't think we should do it at that time. And we said, "When the tax base gets back up and it recovers, we'll reduce that mileage back down to 3.5 mils, which has been a historic number and was the number we operated on when we just had Groveland Township." So, we did that. This year was the first year that we lowered the tax partway from 3.94 to 3.8. I think it's actually 3.8005 or something. It's 3.8 basically. And started to bring it down. And this might seem odd, but I actually think, when elected people make commitments about what they're going to do on taxes, I really do think they have an obligation to try and keep them. I know we had all heard how Lieutenant Governor Whitmer said during the campaign, she was going to get rid of that seniors' tax rate that we got, that they gave to the businesses, and undo that, because it was all right by then. I'm pretty sure, in the last couple of years, I haven't heard it brought up again. So, where most of us are not going to see that break again, I think. But, that's how we got to where we are right now. And if you look at those runs, you'll see that when we got to the full swipe of what we were doing in Genesee County and in the village, our number of runs went up. And then, it started to diminish. Our peak number is where the color kind of changes on that graph, and that's in 2013. Our peak number was 2,247 runs. And now, that we're completely vested of the village and everybody else, our last year's runs totaled 948. And I know our fire department will go out if you get a call about a down tree, and they don't always count those, because if you call 911 to tell them you're doing that, they'll give you a number for it, but they'll charge you about 34 bucks for that number. That's what our mouse do. So, there was no point in wasting it. If you want, add 100 to it, but it's still the same basic issue. It doesn't change anything here. We have, I think, a significant drop in the number of calls. And actually, I think it's the right thing to do. What we found is, even though we do all these other runs, you cannot fill the hopper for the cost of doing them. And so, we started looking at these runs and said, "Jesus, even with the 945, or if you want to make it 1,050, roughly 20% of those calls, there's still not in Groveland Township," okay? And, they are costing us money, because it's cycle time. And one of the things you have to remember, if you think, "Well, we got to have somebody there, because we're doing it," you go down there into Springfield and do a medical run, which is what I think most of ours down there are, rather than fires, right? You take an ambulance and a crew down there. They pick somebody up. Unless it's something serious like a heart attack, they can tell you, "I want to go to Beaumont and Royal Oak," or anyplace else. And that's where you got to take them. You can't tell them no, unless it's life-threatening. Then, they have to take you up here to Genesis, whether you like it or not. That's just the protocol on it. So, when these people go down here or up here, they can be a long way away from us for a long time, and they're not here. That's the rub of what's happening here, I think. We are, when we look at our own needs in here, it's somewhere around 7, maybe 800 runs a year that we need to do for us, if we don't go doing everybody else's. And what And what happens is, if you have a significant amount of extra cycle time, people are going to take the easiest course. If you're another fire department and you're ready to add a couple of people because you can't handle your demand, but you can get Groveland Township to do it for you, they're going to do it. They're going to use you to use them. And that's nice. We believe in the principles of mutual aid. We're not saying we shouldn't. We're just saying that we're doing significantly more out than we ever do in. I mean, we do literally 10 mutual aid runs out for everyone that we get in. And the guideline from the Medical Control Board is about not more than 5% because they want you to handle most of yours. To be honest with you, the whole damn system doesn't work if people don't do mutual aid. There's nobody that can staff enough to make sure they have every conceivable permutation covered by their own people. You get an accident on I-75, you might have two, three people out there picking up folks because there's a bunch of cars in an accident. But you need to be able to handle about 95 of them yourself. And so that's what we found out when we looked at the runs and said, you know, kind of way out of skew on that. So that kind of brings us to today and the conclusion of the study. Here's what happened. We went back to the North Oakland Fire Authority, and I said, Chief Lenz has been absolutely top-notch on this, and said, "How would you handle this stuff?" And then Chief Mason said, "Well, I'd like to put a revised proposal together too." And I said, "Great." So he put revised proposals together, and we're going to go over those today for you. And I think it's kind of interesting, when you look at both of them, the systems are quite strikingly similar, okay? But I'll try and give you the high-level overview of what it is and what the numbers come out to because with what Chief Mason's done here, it's significantly closer than it was. If you remember when we started out back several slides, if we don't change anything, we need to become the most expensive in the entire state of Michigan. And I don't know what else could scream for saying, "There's got to be something you could do." But now, with what Chief Mason's put together, we have two proposals. They're very similar. I'll tell you what they are in a nutshell. I'll give you North Oakland Fire Authority's review first, and then I'm going to let Chief Mason explain his. The North Oakland Fire Authority looked at this stuff, this data, and just came back and said, "You know, Bob, really, we could help handling basically the volume of calls you have on the Dixie corridor and the I-75 corridor. And probably have the Groveland team handling the stuff that's in the township, basically, exclusive of that visitor traffic that comes up here." And we both realized that at some point in time in the future, I don't think it's tomorrow, I don't think it's next year, but at some point in time, we know that if this Dixie-by-way concept that we've been promoting takes off, we think we're going to see some additional businesses on Dixie Highway, both in Holly and in Groveland. Most of it probably from Range Hall Road going north because a lot of this down here is on state line. But we looked at that and said, "Okay, he's basically saying he'll take the busy traffic of this corridor, leave the rest to be handled by our fire department. Under that scenario, he's saying we would put one person in the station that's currently on Dixie that's scheduled to be moved over to the, near the Mavis Building." And then what he suggested is, and I've left this out of the cost comparison because I don't want to muddle it up with possibles, could be, or anything else and make the numbers exaggerated. I only looked at his numbers for the first year, which is, we'll leave everything exactly the way it is, operate both systems exactly the way they are, and evaluate where the low-hanging fruit is first. Where things you could pick up would be billing consolidation or duplicate membership for various organizations that could be eliminated, that kind of stuff. After the first year, he's saying, "I think we put one guy in the state, guy or gal, in the station that's currently on Dixie and then move it later." And that's where he has some savings because we told him at the beginning, to even consider going to the North Oakland Fire Authority, a couple of things have to happen. One of them is, I do not like doing deals where one party says, "I got a great deal because we kind of shortchanged the other guy. I've never done them that way in the township before, and I'm not going to start now." It has to be something that actually works, at least financially, for both entities. And so he put his numbers together, and he showed his board, "If we were to merge, there is some savings, clearly not as much as we would have, but some savings if they were to join, if we were to join with them and become equal one-third partner." And that savings is basically predicated on the arrangement I said. After the first, the first year's a wash. Everything you spend, Bob, on the fire department today, you're going to give to us, and we're going to run it exactly the way you have it today. We're going to evaluate for a year where there's some low-hanging fruit. After the first year, we think we only need one person at the station on Dixie, and then we'll use on-calls if we get backed up or crisscross and back each other up. He said after that, he thinks, it's not in the comparison, but he thinks there's the potential to maybe not man that station and maybe not be able to have somebody there all the time. But that's not built into the numbers. It's just a possible, it's what anybody would do, saying, "If I took two small units and put them together, there's probably some other savings that we'll see, but I don't know, I can't tell you what it is now." And I didn't put it into the comparisons, okay? Now, it kind of gets to this chart here. You probably got one in there, I don't know if you got it. I put these on the web after we published the agenda. And as happens, data comes in, or I corrected something. I found a small error in Chief Mason's numbers that I said, "You got the right number in here, but it's one column off that needs to move over." So if you have a chart that's different than this, and I put this revised one up on that table, the one you have was done on an earlier iteration that before I left for the Township Attorney's Office this morning, I realized we hadn't changed this one, and this is the corrected one. So let me explain it to you. There's no difference in year one, what you're going to hear from Chief Mason or what we would do with NACFA, it's the same. Year two, where you have one, there's a difference in the way you look at the comparison is to take whatever North Oakland Fire Authority would charge us for their membership. Because here's how they do it. They don't actually have a millage that goes directly to them. They determine a budget once a year, they give it to their board, their board approves it, and everybody that's in it pays that fee for that year in two payments. One, their fiscal year starts July 1st, so they get half of it in July, get the other half in January. The number that they have, and I made the sheets available in their online thing too, again, you might not be able to follow it because there's tons of discussion and modifications that get made, but I don't want somebody saying we're not being forthright. I've given you everything I have from every source. The number that you have from them that really matters is, what is it they're going to bill for that given year? And so in the case of Groveland, our cost estimate that the chief and I put together is about $836,000. And that's basically the fire millage at 3.5%, excuse me, 3.5 mils, adjusting the base up every year, about 4%, which is historically what it is, but it's probably a little better than that some years. This year, our base actually went up about 5.7, but 4 is a pretty good number, and I thought, we like to do it, and the chief does, be conservative. So we've kind of been on the conservatives, excuse me, side. North Oakland Fire Authority's numbers, you can look through them and do whatever you want with them, but the bottom line is, his fee's projected to be 752. So on the surface, after year one, which is kind of a wash, there'd be about an $84,000 savings on that part. There's a couple of things that have to happen, though. The Groveland Township has a fire department that already has some people retired, and they have a pension and a healthcare benefit. And so I would take that number, that $84,000, and say, "Well, I also have to cover the pension contribution so that their pension system doesn't go into default because we keep our numbers up every year." And I would have to put something in there for the OPEB, which is basically the retirement health. I can tell you that I can give you a pretty darn close number on what the pension number is because it's going to be around $35,000. And I can tell you that the OPEB is my guess, and this is a guess because we just ordered a new actuarial, I don't have it yet, it's maybe $10,000. So out of that 84, you could take out probably about $45,000 would be my best guess. So now we're at a point where we're not $250,000 more than the North Oakland Fire Authority's solution. We are roughly, probably, in the neighborhood of 40 or 50. In my mind, that's not a significant number. But it's indisputable that using the numbers that North Oakland Fire has, there are some things that it would just be cheaper. So there's no point in trying to smokescreen it or anything else. You know, you get some items that are not duplicated that you pay for when they're separate, like audits. It would be combined. You get some economies by doing billing services together. But now, with the new proposal from the chief, we're down to probably somewhere really in the range of about $50 a year. I can ask you more, I don't think that's a significant amount of money at this stage. There are some other dollars that would apply because in the scenarios under NACFA, the money that we get a couple of other places that we give to the fire department now, like the DNR money, the Camp Tamred money and that, those dollars would not be going to NACFA either, they would stay in the township. So there's some additional savings. But I'm telling you, I think it's less than $100 a year. And that's kind of the benchmark when I started talking to the chief in the first place that I said, if we get it within $100, I don't see a reason to do anything, but it's up to the board. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Mason because there's a couple of things that it all boils down to. You've seen the numbers on it, you can slice and dice them any way you want, but that's pretty close to what they're going to be. And the other issue is that in North Oakland Fire Authority, it's true, we're not outsourcing it per se to them. We would be a one-third equal partner, but we're one-third of the voting partners. And if we stay Groveland Fire Department, we are the sole control of the fire department. So those are the two issues that I think we have evaluated as far as we can. The part I can't tell you is the kind of touchy-feely part of it, for lack of a better phrase. And Jim and I have discussed this quite a bit because I think there's a confidence level among our residents with our fire department. And anytime there's change, there's people that have some concern. But I have addressed it as much as I can. I'd like Chief Mason to kind of go over his proposal and explain that before we wrap this discussion up with the board. Can you, Chief?
Thank you. Years ago, when the department first started, they cut firewood so they could buy their first engine. We've come a long way since then, due to the team, and McGee's, the McGee's, and everybody else. We now have first-class fire department, in my opinion. We have two manned stations currently, we have two crews on 24/7. We have three engines, a ladder truck, we've got two tankers. I mean, we have a lot of equipment that we take care of. We're basically the same size as NACFA with Groves and Holly Township. They have two stations, they have similar number of engines. They don't have a ladder, they have similar number of ambulances and things like that. So I don't think you can find two departments in all of the state that are more closely related to those. One difference is they get revenue from two townships. So they do get, or they can get some more money if they request it, I think. And...
It's basically double ours.
So if you, if they get $700,000 for one, $700,000 for the other, that's 1.4 million. We're getting $833,000. So I think we do a lot with the money that we do have. And Bob and I have talked in the past, if we added one Oakland County deputy, it's going to basically cost 3.5 mil, the same thing you get a fire department for, with all the two crews and, you know, all the equipment, and we take care of all that stuff. On top of that, I mean, we got, we were the first that went and got ALS certified in the area, immediately followed by Brandon, I believe. And then we did ALS calls for NACFA and the village. And we're also the first to get our ISO reduced, which forced all the neighboring townships to love to be in the meeting on that, why did Groveland get theirs dropped to a 4, and ours is still at, you know, 7, 9, or whatever it was. So Groveland, in history, has done a lot to build up the fire department. And part of the, we talked, Bob, and I talked when I took over, do we want to keep four people on shift or go to three? Well, there's two reasons why I didn't want to do that. One is we got the safer grant. If we change manning, we lose the safer grant, $244,109. And we were at four people, and our neighboring communities were manned at three. And they had a big fight with Med Control over their manning and how they manned their trucks and how they responded to calls. Ended up, I mean, how long was that, about a year they fought that? It ended up that the state says it's okay, Oakland County said it wasn't, but they gave a waiver to everybody who only had one person on a truck. And they were supposed to meet, you know, like Peyton Hall guy was going to meet. So that was the other reason why, if we can keep two people on each station, that was a better way. But on the other hand, when we were in 2013, when we did 2,200 calls, we were manned the same way. We did have one extra person on during the day, but I think that didn't make a huge difference to us. And so now we're back to the 2003 numbers, and that's when we had three people on. We had two people on Station 1 and one person at Station 2. And we covered all the calls and everything was going fine. So then when, and honestly, if NACFA hadn't given everyone a huge pay raise, I think we'd still be running, and we wouldn't have had any problems continuing on at that course. But I agree, the people weren't being paid well enough. I mean, an EMT, non-engineer's getting 11 bucks an hour. You can get that at McDonald's working. And the medics at the time, we gave them a significant, well, $2, $3 raise when I got here. They were making, I think, $12 or $13 an hour prior to Chief McGee leaving. And it was just because of budget. So now, the proposal is that we stay manned at two people per station until the safer grant runs out. Because if we cancel that, I'd lose all that money. So if we reduce manning, we lose all the money. Basically, we could have done this two years ago, and, you know, it would have been, we wouldn't have been having this argument. But after the safer grant runs out, I'm proposing that we go to three personnel on shift, two at Station 2 because that's in the center of the township. And frankly, they do more calls now than Station 1. When we were doing the village calls, we were doing...
It's also located closer to the bulk of the population of the township.
And when we were doing the village calls, we were doing more calls on Station 1. So if we put one person at Station 1, two people at Station 2, we're back to our 2003 manning levels, and frankly, everything was going well there. We have to change mentality a little bit because we need more people to come in from home now because frankly, I do the same thing. We get called out for a call, and I don't want to get up every night and say, "Well, there's a whole nother station manned, so I don't have to get up. But if we get another call, I'll go run in." But we have some great responders. Russ is right here, he goes on a lot of calls. Carol's husband, not really, it's her husband, but he goes on more calls than anybody every year for the last, I don't know, 15 years, he's been responder of the year. So we do have some core people that come all the time. We just need some more people to come in. And we also need, we've added several people who live in the township over the last few years, but we probably need a few more or have them respond more often. So that's a challenge for us. But the budget, if you, am I looking at the right one? If in the 2021 timeframe, if I don't add the safer grant in there, we'll go in the negative. But we have enough in Catalata Reserve. But after that, this shows that we're making about $50,000 a year manned at three people with a $4 an hour pay raise, starting April 1st, for all the guys. So for the basic, that gives them a 30% pay raise, which is very significant, I think, anyway. And it's more on par with what NACFA's paying. It's not, still not the highest in the area, it's not the lowest either. So hopefully that will be able to bring in more people because if you don't give them a pay raise, some people will say, "Well, I'll go to NACFA and get the, you know, the bigger pay raise." So that's my proposal. And on April 1st, we give everyone a $4 an hour pay raise. We stay at four people until the safer runs out, which would be 2021. It technically runs out January 10th, but since we haven't used all the money, it will be extended out several months, I don't know what that is. But after that...
You usually do it till the money runs out.
Right. So let's say April 1st, just for a date, we would go to three people, two at Station 2, one at Station 1. That also takes me, the proposal takes me off of the schedule of working shifts. But during the day, since I would be working during the day, I would be that fourth person to go on calls. And I'd also pick up shifts, as it always happens, that, "Well, there's no one available," or, you know, Roscoe wants to go on vacation, so he's got four shifts that week I got to cover. And right now, we just don't have enough people available. We have enough people on the roster, but they're not always available. It seems like a lot of those days they're never available. But we do have people pick them up, but... But we do have people pick them up. So, and that's also setting up for my replacement. I'm thinking when I turn 65 in five years, or four and a half years, that's what I'm playing with now. The good person that takes my place might not wanna work shifts and do all the administrative stuff because I can put a lot of hours in. And so, I think that fixes that problem. And with the reduction of the one person, it puts us at around fifty, well, the first year is fifty thousand dollars, basically, that we'll have left over. So, that's what we think we need each year to keep putting in the capital rate reserve to buy new equipment and things like that. Now, I suggested, Bob, that we have to put in for a millage renewal this year. I suggest that we put in for the 3.8, charge it at the 3.5 mils. That way, if we have to, we can raise it to 3.8 with approval, obviously. And then in two years, at the next election, if it just doesn't work or Med Control says, my golly, you have to have four people, two people on each truck, then we could put in for a special assessment or something, or millage increase or whatever you thought. But I would not wanna go in now for an increase to five, let's say, and then it not get approved and then we don't have any fire department in the township. So, my proposal is renew the millage at 3.8. In two years, look at it, if it's needed, ask for it, but I don't think it will be unless some catastrophic, catastrophic change comes in.
Again, we don't run the world.
Right. And I'd like to say that the crew, I mean Lieutenant Nicholson does a lot of work on the trucks, Cap Williams does a lot of repairs on the buildings, we're painting, you know, we don't hire a lot of outside people to do things for us. Like last year, we hired a company to do the hose testing, this is such a terrible job, we're just gonna bring it in-house. That was like forty-six hundred dollars a year we paid for that. So, it'll be a one-time cost of about three grants for a pump and then we'll just, you know, have our own guys do it. And we've cut back on a lot of things. Sometimes I've been told we cut too deep, but we'll see how things work. And every year since Steve McGee retired, we put a significant amount of money into the capital rate reserve. I wish I knew the number, actually Bob and I are trying to figure that out. But I think it was about eight, a hundred, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars the first year, about a hundred and sixty thousand the next year. And it's too early to tell, but I think we'll still be about a hundred thousand this year. So, we're not broke. I've never asked the board for more money. We also got eighty-five thousand dollars out of the budget to give the full-time guys a medical insurance. That hurt, trying to find that much money. And we just need to be done with this so that we can start building morale up again and move forward. Because we put some things on hold just to make sure we're not buying something or doing something that NACFA's gonna get. Question?
No, wait, wait. You're done, I gotta finish. We're still having questions, okay? So, to the board, I'm saying, I think that with Jim's help, we've looked at every conceivable issue and report and comment that's been made along the way to try and ascertain what the boiled-down facts are. I cannot, I don't know Jim, I can't think of anything else we could ask that we haven't already reviewed or looked at.
No.
And so, I'm asking the board, is there anything else you think we need to ask or look at that we haven't done so far?
I have a comment with the Rose Township. I've heard that they're considering going out.
I know, I don't think that's gonna happen.
That is a rumor.
Yeah, rumors fly hot heavy. I'd be flabbergasted at that. I know Diane pretty well, but I don't think that's gonna happen. It is flying...
No, it is, it's not a rumor.
It's not, I have the meeting minutes right here from December. Yeah, it's not a rumor.
If I had to guess, that's probably a positioning they're taking because one of the things that had been looked at, North Oakland Fire Authority, was whether or not they were gonna continue to bill on the fee basis or go to an area-wide, like a school district does a village rate. And I understand exactly why Rose doesn't wanna do it. Their state equalized value's bigger than NACFA's. I don't believe there's any chance of that happening. But they could be saying that for positioning reasons.
Yep, well, I mean, I, I don't need to interrupt, but item three on their minutes under NACFA says, "NACFA would have more accountability to the citizens if they had their own tax authority because all the Rose Township citizens would be voting to grant their millages rather than the board voting on their funds." They must renew by December 2021. NACFA's a hundred thousand dollar increase over last year.
Well, NACFA bills the fees for running the operation. The numbers I used are what he said. That's why I said this is attractive to NACFA because it would lower their fees and what they bill. And the, the issue is that Rose's state equalized value is bigger than Holly's. Ours is bigger than Holly's. But if you bill on the fee basis, we actually come out better and so does Rose. They, they would like to do it because I think it simplifies it for them if they have a flat millage. I understand, I had an extensive conversation with Diane, the supervisor, and I know her very well. I understand why she doesn't wanna go to an area-wide millage. And the last I talked to her, that was, they said that's not gonna happen. So, I think part of what's happening is just positioning because there is some give and take in all of this. That's part of the issue where, in my summary, I said, if we're NACFA, we're a one-third voting. If we're Groveland, we're all of it. So, I think what you have here is an accurate representation of what the nuts and bolts of it boils down to. I'm very well aware of what's going on in NACFA. Do you, do you have any other questions?
Um, I just...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to tell you that.
Um, overall, historically and by this and what you're talking about Rose Township, a millage is a temporary, I'm not interested in a temporary fix. We need to do something that's long-term. And I see long-term.
You'll get the final revised numbers because Chief and I talked about that column, they asked the slide over and that's what he'll use for the budget meeting. But I, again, I was at the attorney's office all morning today, so I had to try and do that.
And my only other question, Chief answered because I wanted to know if the raises were included in those numbers.
I'm sorry, I was talking.
Oh, no. No, I just, you already answered it. My other question that I had written out was I wanted to make sure that those raises were included in your numbers.
Yes.
Everybody, I, I will tell you, I had a good and informative time working with Bob and Kevin on this. And there's some things that I wanna stress that I don't think are considered at this point. So, one of Bob's bullet points was, it's up there, let's just think field. So, in the course of that, I just wanna make sure that people understand, everybody here, probably Kevin, we have a fiduciary relationship to the community to do this. I'm personally aware, that I know the three of us a couple of times, we're living on Maylocks. I'm sure many of the firefighters in this room and their families are doing the same. We're not insensitive to any of it. The other component of this goes again back to the field. I have the pleasure not only of talking offline with a few of the firefighters, I've received an education in terms of the history of the department. I've only been here in the community in nineteen years. And the fire department, I've always been there, I've always been very happy about it. And in the last few years, I've actively immersed myself in the culture to have a better understanding of what's going on here. And I'm thrilled about the history. Thrilled that we have, we're cutting-edge for the longest time. And I'm very, very happy that we may have an enduring solution. That's kind of the duck paneling Gina was saying, enduring. It's gotta last for a long time. Not only do we not wanna do this again, but it's the right thing to do, to evaluate, if I wanna say it in dispassionate terms, our business unit, our major corporation being the township, we're looking at our business unit. We're letting our business unit, business unit president flexes his brain, uses resources along with us to see what are the right solutions. I think this is a great solution. And I, I hope we can go forward with it.
Okay, we just need to get a consensus then. And I don't wanna cut anybody in the board off here. Does anybody in the board have anything else that they wanted to say or question or break up? I wanna make sure we've tried to address it. Good?
I'm satisfied.
Then, I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, I wanna make sure that you have another chance. Is it agreeable then in the position of the board, and I'd just like to have an acknowledgement of it, that we continue on with letting Chief Mason go forward and implement his plan here as outlined in this presentation?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes from Gina, yes from Patty, yes from Shelley and yes from Jim. And yes from me.
Excellent job.
Okay. All right, Chief, you got any questions?
I would just like to say that it'd be nice to get a commitment that we don't have to fight this again anytime soon. We've, basically for the last two years, we've been on, walking on eggshells and we thought we were done with it and it came up again. So, I would like a commitment saying that we're gonna stop talking about this, let us work on what we need to do.
I think you've implemented this, that's what we're saying. We, we don't...
Thank you.
This is not some, you know, I have spent way more hours on this than I ever wanted to.
And I'd also like to say that Bob probably knows more about fire department operations than I do. I like, and I'm a supervisor in Oakland County. And Jim, because Jim has been working very closely with him for the past year or so.
So, from our perspective, we have now resolved, completed the study. There's nothing else left that they want us to ask. I think you go forward and implement what you got.
Thank you.
All right, now, well, if there's questions or something, somebody wants to ask, please.
Can we call a vote?
We'll say do a roll.
Yeah.
She got all of us, we all, we all said yes individually. You got all of that in the minutes, right?
And Chief, is there a process for that waiver for the one person if we do go to...
It's, unless Med Control changes their decisions, it's guaranteed to get because they had it, given to several departments.
It's about five or six.
But we have to ask for an annual waiver.
It's, oh, it's an annual?
It'll be probably three.
Okay.
But it's five or six.
I'm sorry, this lady, do you have any please?
Shirley Baxter, two quick questions. The averages of homes built per year prior to 2008, how many years was it, ten, twenty, thirty, forty?
Well, I don't know, let's see, I started doing that, I think, Dave, in 1998, right? So, from 98 to 2007, the number consistently went up a little bit. And by the end, the last three or four years, I think, were 32 that we put in the citizen.
But that was the average for that ten-year period then?
Thirty-two is what it was running at in 2000 and, before 2008, so through 2007. In 2008, you know, we have what we usually call the Great Reset, right? And the property tax values dumped. And so, we looked, the number you have there that says, what is it for 10 years, is from 2000 and, it's 10 years to 2009, so 2009, 2019, that's what it is.
Okay.
That's the 5.3. I, by, by year if you wanted.
No, no, so it's an average. So, it's 10 years, 32 a year. The other question I have is on the revised handout with the NACFA assessment of $752,000. Is that one-third of the cost? Is it based on residents, the number of households?
It is, the way they bill their service now is they come up with a dollar amount and if they have two participants, they divide it by two. If they have three, they divide it by three. The 752,000 is the exact same money you would propose billing Holly Township or Rose Township.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Sue?
Can I ask for an official motion with a roll call because there are financials involved in this decision?
Well, I don't care. You wanna make a motion?
Sure. I, I make a motion that, yep, don't laugh at me people. Make a motion that we support Chief Mason's...
Proposal.
Thank you. Proposal.
As submitted.
As submitted. And I hope that's it.
I support.
Okay. Any other questions, she, any other questions or comments on the board?
Second.
Okay, if you wanna take a roll call on it? Shelley? Uh-oh, I'm sorry. Jerry?
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Shelley Kidd?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Luzarelli?
Yes.
Bob DePaul?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If you're going to go with what Chief Mason has said, does that mean we're joining up in NACFA?
No. No. Okay. Well, I don't know how you got that. No, we, we accepted his proposal. His proposal. All right, that would be Chief Lindsay's proposal.
Because my second question is, are you folks aware that there's several lawsuits against NACFA right now?
I'm not aware of any that I...
If you go to join that, you might just end up being hit.
I have heard, let me just say this, I've heard all kinds, I can tell you this, in the two years, I have heard more rumors that you can shake a stick at on every fire department out here. I'm not seeing any substantiated on that, I'm not aware of any lawsuits. Been very open, I'd be surprised if there actually is one.
Okay. Now, you need to check, all you gotta do is call county, correct?
I suppose.
No, you can't, trust me. I've talked to the Med Control Board repeatedly, asking for specific information to find out why everybody was upset. You can't get it.
You can't get it.
It's all HIPAA protected, it's just part of Med Control.
I wasn't talking about...
You're talking about the...
I was talking about particulars.
It's not, you can't even, I can't even get a number, I can't even get averages.
There's something on the record of someone suing NACFA.
I'm not, I'm not aware of it, I've not seen it then. I've heard all kinds of wild rumors for the last two years about almost every fire department out here, ours included. And when I try and validate them and check them out, it's usually somebody's rumor.
Do you know something specific?
Oh, yeah.
Tell us.
I'll get you the information.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. It would be a tough one.
Now that you've agreed to this proposal from Chief, what is the process to monitor that?
Well, every month, well, first of all, two things happen. Every year, he has to prepare a budget. Our budget session is in February, so he'll be putting the figures that we've talked about already in that budget session. Then, and what happens is in March, at the public meeting in March, we present the budgets for approval. So, I guess to answer your question, the budget gets done once a year. Every month, he submits a report on his runs, that kinda stuff. And then every month, you take care of giving us updated financials on where we stand.
Well, there is...
Oh, yes, it's, it's always been that way. That, that's exactly how, if you remember back to the chart where I said, we realized we weren't putting any money away, and then I realized, in a couple of years, we're gonna run out of money. That's how we know that. It's that stuff that comes to reach.
And his proposal is through 2025, just so you know that.
That's a fluid, dog, you change...
I know, I know, but it's still...
That's why I put, that's not meant to track...
I'm gonna tell you, if you look for the stuff that we're gonna start posting on the website, so you have the same packet we have, you're gonna need to check it just before the meeting. Because sometimes information comes in that we add on the agenda, literally, an hour or two before the meeting, or we find out something that, yeah, we corrected it here, but forgot to correct it there and have to make a new sheet. And that's what happened here. That's why both of them are there. Yeah, you?
Mr. DePaul, I've got a question for you. Since it's been stated that our new builds and everything are going in the tank, what's the problem? What is, is it that land is so expensive out here?
There, honestly, there's just not a whole lot of property for sale out here. You have to remember, one of the things I said in an earlier presentation, I didn't bother to rehash it here today, but 40% of this township is either owned by the state[1685.79]
but forty percent of this township is either owned by the state of Michigan or the county. A lot of it is wildlife preserve. Now, we all moved out here because we liked the up north feel and the low density. So, I have either led or been intimately involved in every master plan this township has had for the last forty years. They're either done under my signature or reviewed by the board when I was up here. Every one of them, and every interim modification in the meantime. I have never had anybody say, we really want to have a lot of subdivisions out here. So, the reason that growth is slow, you might think, well, thirty-two homes was the increase from what it is, but even that's peanuts to most communities. They build two or three hundred homes in a subdivision and do four of them in a year at places. And we were only doing thirty-two. What happened was, frankly, when we got hit in the 2010 census, we had about a hundred and fifty homes at one point in time, of people that had taken advantage of the banking institution that was busy leveraging people more money than their house was even worth. So when the economy slowed down, we had about a hundred and fifty homes at a time that were vacant because people lost them. And then we had the two mobile home parks, which literally got decimated. Some of those people lost their jobs, couldn't find a job here in Michigan. And literally, one day would pack up their personal effects and family in a car and drive to another state. So those two mobile homes, both ultimately went bankrupt, and there were huge vacancies in them. If you take those two mobile homes and the hundred and fifty homes we have, that's how we lost about six hundred people. After the economy started to come back, and even now we don't build a lot of homes, the best year we've had, I think, was, I think it was 2017, I got it in here, Carrie gave it to me, but I think we had seventeen homes one year, which is about half what we did on a normal year before. But when you put them all together, we have a lot of years that are three or four or five. There's just no builds, and part of it's no, not very many good parcels available. Our ex clerk, Patty's predecessor, Pam Mason, who lived here for a long time and retired, a year and a half ago, right? Pam retired and she built in Holly only because she could not find a piece of property here. She was in my office the other day and said, Bob, we'd still like to move back to Groveland. I have a Realtor who's looking for me for property, but we can't find a piece that's decent that we can move on. Or I'd sell my new home in Holly and move back to Groveland. So the answer to your question is, there's just not a lot left. I know when I look at the parcels that are near me, you go down Groveland Road near M-15, there's a couple of pieces that are for sale now. That was all swamped. And so, they got a driveway in there somehow, I don't know quite how.
I don't know how. I live right there, I have no idea how they did that.
If somebody builds in there, tell me if you disagree. They're going to be living in the middle of a mosquito pot.
Oh, absolutely, we actually walked it, and in, way, way, way in the back of that part.
There's a little spot.
There's a little spot that you can plot the hatches, the rest of it is all swamped.
But you know, Sue, what does it take to get a driveway in through that? Lots of money.
A lot of money.
So the answer to your question is, I'm saying, our master plan says we don't want high density, so we're zoned for rural estate farm. Forty percent of the township can never be built because it's owned by the state or the county. And the property that's left, most of it is frankly, I think, well, I'm sure, not suitable for building. But you can't tell somebody they can't build on it, because you can build on anything if you're willing to put pylons in or whatever else. You can build on a piece of property today that's in the flood plain, as long as you put it up on stilts.
So my next question is, since you guys are going to go ahead and develop this ORB park, are we going to get any of that?
Any of what?
Any of the revenues coming into that ORB park?
The ORB park is owned by the state of Michigan, so it's, I think it's the hundred and fourth state park. And it's managed by Oakland County under a long-term contract, which actually, we support it because we thought Oakland County would do, excuse me, a better job of managing the facility than just letting it out to the typical low-cost bidder. But we don't get any money from that other than the same property taxes that were paid on an empty gravel pit. The state of Michigan used to buy property and then just, it's the only piece of property that doesn't get assessed by the county assessor. The state of Michigan would come in and say, we will tell you what our property is worth, and it'd be something like, oh, two or four thousand dollars in acreage or something like that. And that's what you get in a tilt pay, if they call it. And if we had to run the township on the money that we get from the state of Michigan for all the property they own, quarter of the township, we would have to close the door on about January 4th or 5th because there'd be no money to run the township. So, we don't get anything special from it, we don't get fees from it, we don't get anything out of Groveland Oaks Park either.
How about the Dixie Highway project?
Well, now, the Dixie Highway is frankly, long-term strategically where we think our salvation is. We have almost no businesses in Groveland Township.
True.
We have only about 1.7 miles of M-15, you know, where Bedrock is and that. And if you notice, a lot of that property south of Bedrock, that's all on the flood plain there, so I don't think we're going to see much there. We'll probably see something over time, but not a lot. We have about six and a half or seven miles of Dixie Highway, but almost half of it is in that state wildlife preserve. I'm just telling you, it's almost impossible yet, okay? So, our one area where we can get some business revenue is really Dixie Highway from where the township stops to Grange Hall Road, and from Grange Hall Road at Dixie over to the Expressway by dock. That area basically in our new master plan is what we call an overlay district. We think, over time, we'll get some there. One of the problems, admittedly though, with it, is the fact that we don't have any sewers. Now, nobody wants sewers in the township because our density is so low. You put sewers in, you will have people come in, like a developer say, I want to put a mobile home park in the middle of the township, and you can't tell him no very easily, okay? So, nobody wants that. But sewers along the Dixie corridor to Grange Hall and our township property frankly, would make the likelihood of better quality developments very worthwhile. I have a meeting that I'm going to, it's about the fourth one on it, and I'm being honest with you, I get real nervous. If you've ever gone to a sewer meeting, here's what happens. The first meeting you have, they tell you, that's probably six to eight million bucks. And I got four million in a grant that I think we can use from the Army Corps of Engineers. I dig it, well, I figure we got to put two or three million on the township property for a treatment plant to develop that. You know, we might be able to get there. And the DNR is going to put two million into their treatment subject sites on their property because it's failing and they have to redo it. And the Groveland Oaks has got a park system that's failed, they've improved it, but they know it won't last forever. And if we put some building up here, we're going to have some demand, so we thought, we've got a moving shot at this. Second meeting I went to, they said, well, the estimate now is, six to eight, right? The estimate now is, I think it went to sixteen point six, okay? Hey, wait a minute now, I cannot take a township with roughly a million-dollar-a-year operating budget and bankrupt it overnight trying to mortgage seven or eight or ten million dollars. And the third meeting I went to, got to nineteen. So, I said, where did these numbers come from? Have you ever seen what happened in the village of Ortonville? We tried to help them on two of their attempts at doing sewers, and here's what happens invariably. They start out and tell people, if you put sewers in, fix hundred dollars, it's probably eleven or twelve thousand dollars. Two years later, when they get close to actually doing it, it's twenty-five. And so, it dies right then. So the meeting that we have coming up, Thursday? Yeah, tomorrow, is to sit there and try and say, one of the things you have to do in this group, and we've got a lot of people involved in that now, is help us figure out how this gets financed. Because if the answer is, you want Holly Township and Groveland each run on about a million dollars a year, rough figures, to finance something like nineteen million dollars, I'm just telling you, that's not going to happen. The biggest finance deal we ever did here was when we put in the gas line project about twenty years ago. And we financed 1.8 million dollars, and I wouldn't put the bond through for approval till we had 528 people sign on the dotted line that I will buy the gas line for this price. Because it took 528 to make sure we could cover the bond of a million eight to put it in. And it turned out, rightly, after about a year or two, we had 700 people on it. So it worked out real well. But I am not an advocate of doing what a lot of these finance deals are. I give you a good example. The village of Holly made about a 10 million dollar addition on their sewer treatment plant, water plant, because Polty Homes was going to build, I think it was 400 homes on the edge of the village, was on the edge of the village limits. Part was in the village, part was in the township. Then when the economy slowed down, Polty said, you know what, we're not going to do it, we're just not going to do it. Holly Village had already spent 10 million dollars improving the treatment plant and had nobody else to hook up on it. I went to the meeting that they had when they talked about what they were going to do to the people's water bills, because they still have to pay the 10 million, whether anybody hooks up or not. And I looked at, at that time it was Steve, and I said, Steve, if I ever put a sewer system in here, take me out in the woods and shoot me because there's no way these people are going to be paying more for their water bill than they're paying for their darn house payment. So, I'm very attuned to how it works from having done the gas project and what we need to see on this. And so is George Cullis, the supervisor in Holly. We both understand what the issue is. Now hopefully tomorrow, one of the things that's supposed to happen is the folks from Oakland County are supposed to start telling us, well, here's the ways you can finance it. Because sometimes, if you have a limited number of people, you can go to them and say, you're going to have to commit to, I'm picking a number out of thin air, you're going to have to commit to 300,000 of that construction. You're going to have to commit to 500,000, and then we'll put it in the sewer district. And you're going to pay for that before we do it. And then if we actually hook up and it goes bigger, we'll all share in the proceeds from it if there's some profit. But unless we can do a deal like that, there's no way to do it. I understand that our township property, I think, would literally double in value if we put a sewer line in there because it opens up development to just about anything you could want to put in there and a much higher density. But the fallback to that is, if it's too expensive to do it, we will have to put a self-contained treatment plant, a lot of them are about two and a half to three million bucks, for whatever we put in there. And the reason I would say if we did it that way, that we would want to own it is, I don't know if you realize this, but in Michigan, if somebody puts a treatment plant in, like at a mobile home park, and they don't take care of it, and the DNR comes back and says, you're contaminating the groundwater, you need to fix your treatment plant, and it's typically at least a half a million to a million bucks every time that happens. And the mobile home company says, you know what, I'm going bankrupt, I just walk away from it, guess who has to fix it?
The town judge.
Exactly. And I don't want that to happen. So if we do a treatment for that property, we're going to run it, even if we have the county do it for us, so that we know it's done the right way and we don't end up getting stuck later with something else.
Gotcha, thank you. Any other questions?
Chief Mason, in your proposal, did you include any kind of a raise for our firefighters?
Well, there's a four-dollar raise in April. I did not put, like, it's a five-year plan, I did not want to put one in, an additional one, because I didn't want to have my feet held in the fire. But obviously, we'll look at that and look at finances later on. We haven't even talked about it.
The reason why I'm asking is I ran some numbers, just pulling information off the internet and wherever I can find it. And I found out that currently, our part-time guys are being paid about 4,500 dollars per year, less than just a median number. Not high, not low, just right in the middle. The thing that got me, the thing that got me, was the full-time guys are 14,000 dollars under median.
Not for this area, they're right at the median. In fact, we pay our full-time guys, starting to pay higher than NOCFA does, by about two or three grand.
We looked at that too.
Well, but again, we have to, overall, there's no way that Groveland Township will ever be paying what some big municipality is. There's just no baser to spread it on. But I think we pay a competitive rate. For this area? For this area. I don't think, I know we do.
All right, well, I'll be back to that. I noticed that you didn't mention anything about station one, Mr. Stas, on it.
This one?
Yes.
Or for our...
I have a message to the citizens. You mentioned that you have plans for a new station on it.
That's correct.
And you're going to knock the old one down.
No, I said, we're going to have a new station and sell the old one. The old one is going to pay for the new station completely. And I am very confident we can do that because I know several people that are interested in it. I've had it appraised, and I've talked to people about what they'd be willing to pay for it. I'm confident we can build a new station for it. And to that end, Jim has been helpful, we have a meeting coming up with an architect that's...
Next week.
Yeah, this week, we're going to talk to them about that and see what ideas they might have. But I am positive we can build a new station that is significantly more efficient to operate for fire department and the MSP detachment that's better than what we have now. And that corner has, if you think about it, much more marketing potential. As a site with the development on the Dixie Highway, that's going to be a prime corner for somebody. And that's why I have a couple of people that said, if you sell it, tell me, I want to buy it. Where we're putting the MSP slash fire station building is backed by the Big Mavis Building, and that's property we own, so we don't have to buy it. And you really don't need to have the fire station out on Dixie Highway, it just needs to be able to get the equipment out. We have a nice Ashwall road that's in there already.
And you have the possibility of putting something on the tax rolls.
Yes, for sure, once we sell it, it'll go on the tax roll.
Well, an ambulance goes out on the highway on the run. Are you, what are you charging for that one?
We, I don't...
Are you limited in any way?
Well, everybody kind of adjusts the fees about once a year when we find out what the ambulance companies do. Because there are some rules for Medicare and stuff that adjust it a little bit every year. So, every ambulance company, I think, and every fire department I know, once a year, they kind of take a look at it, whatever they are allowed to charge, they do. So we have to bill by law, everybody, including us, or you can't bill anybody. So, what we do is have a process, if there's somebody in the township that has financial difficulty or can't get their insurance company to pay for it, then we have a process whereby Chief and I can look at it, decide if we need to give them a break on it. But we bill everybody. The problem is, the cost of an ambulance run varies all over the place. I think on the high side, it's about 800 bucks, seven something. Seven something, and on the Medicaid ones, they're about...
You can charge whatever you want, what the insurance company pays you is a difference.
Yeah, that's the whole medical question, they charge up here, but they're paid out here.
Actually, the better pay is from the insurance companies, I think, and Medicaid's the kind of cheap one. They're, they don't care what you bill, you're getting whatever Medicaid says it is, I think it's about 200 bucks.
Just a genesis, if you have a heart attack in one building over here, and they have to take it to the hospital, it's a thousand dollars.
Yes.
Plus 796 bucks. So, what I'm saying, anybody, charge it.
We do charge all trains.
Well, we raised...
But you won't get it anyway.
Yeah, we raised it two years ago, we raised it by a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but you're still paying reasonable and customary, right?
Yeah, we charge what the star charges.
It's all, everybody's pretty much the same on that. That's why I said, when you look at what an ambulance run is, that was one of the things we did, went back and looked at it. And they are about 100 bucks more roughly than they were a couple of years ago. But the average for all the runs you do, and it varies a few bucks depending which month you look at, because you might have more Medicaid one month and not the next. But the average run we actually get from a run is about 424 dollars. So, there's some that are eight, some that are two, you just shake it all and bake it. 424 is the average we get right now. Now, I'm sure if we checked it again, it might be 426 this year or 422, but it's always in that ballpark area.
Well, for our private agents, don't be the cheapest one.
No, we're not, they're really, we're pretty consistent with all of them, as soon as they go up, we all, everybody jumps on that, raising it.
Any other questions? If not, motion to adjourn will be in order. I think you need to be, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post, thank you.